Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we'll start off as we do with all of our Planning Commission meetings with a roll call. Darren, would you perform the roll call?
Kenan Gray. Rachel Clark. Justin Curley. Dan Roach. Ed Yanis. Larry Brayton. Tom Green. Dale Cole. Olean Veach has recused herself from this hearing and is not present, and we'll put that in the record that she has recused herself and is not sitting among the Planning Commission.
We are here tonight for a public hearing on case B 2228. I request to receive a commission-approved use for wind energy conversion systems. The project is to be known as the Big Blue River Wind Farm. The project is to consist of not more than 38 wind turbines. Properties within the project area are owned by multiple property owners located in portions of Fall Creek, Jefferson, Prairie, Henry, Harrison, and Greensboro Townships in Henry County. Maps of the proposed turbine sites and associated necessary project infrastructure are available online at www.henryco.net/planningcommbigbluerever-aspx, or can be viewed during regular business hours in the office of the Henry County Planning Commission on Ray Street, Suite 212, Newcastle, Indiana. At this point, Darren, you wanted to go over procedures, or how are you handling that?
Yep. A couple of housekeeping items. Restrooms, I believe, are through these exit doors back here. There are devices to assist with those who may have hearing difficulties in the back, over here by the sound booth, if anyone needs that. We also have an ASL interpreter, and if there is anyone who is using the ASL interpreter this evening, she does have some questions. So if there's anyone who will be using her, please come see her. Again, I announced earlier, so for the public hearing procedures for July 23, 2019, there is a speaker sign-up sheet that is available over here to your right, my left. There are sign-up sheets for those which wish to speak in support, those who wish to speak in opposition or have questions, or those government entities that wish to address the Planning Commission. Once the public hearing is open, the procedures will be as follows. The applicant will make their presentation. The applicant and their representatives will be given one hour to present their case. After the applicant's time has elapsed, the Planning Commission members will have the opportunity to ask the applicant questions. There will be no time limit on the amount of time that the Commission has to ask questions. When there are no further questions from the Commission, the hearing will proceed on to the receiving of public testimony. We will most likely take a break once the applicant's presentation has been made. We will then, after the break, we will come back to those who wish to speak in support. Again, if you wish to speak in support, or opposition, or a government body, you do need to sign up ahead of time. So when we come back from the break, I will collect those sheets, and we will call names off of the sheet in the order in which everyone signed up. So one hour in total will be allotted to hear from members of the public who wish to speak in support of the proposed project. Speakers will be called to the microphone off the sign-up sheet in the order in which they signed up. All speakers must clearly state their name and county of residence prior to speaking. Individuals will be given a maximum of three minutes each to speak. Attorneys representing multiple individuals will be given a maximum of nine minutes to speak, provided that they state their representation as such prior to speaking. Public testimony and support will be taken for one hour in total, or until there are no other speakers in support, whichever comes first. All speakers will have only one opportunity to provide testimony. Speakers will not ask to return to the podium to make additional remarks or ask questions. Speakers cannot yield time to another speaker. Testimony must be relevant to the matter being considered by the Commission. Speakers who are not providing relevant or respectful testimony will forfeit their time. If a speaker has a question for the applicant, that question must be addressed to the Commission and not the applicant. The Commission will ask the applicant and/or their representatives to answer relevant audience questions after hearing from all speakers. Once we have gone through support, we will move on to those who wish to speak in opposition or have questions. The procedures are the same as what I just read. We will most likely take a break at that point. When we return, we will hear from government entities. So 15 minutes in total will be allotted to hear from elected or appointed officials speaking on behalf of a government body or agency. The official must clearly state their name and what government entity they represent prior to speaking. Officials will be given a maximum of three minutes each to speak. Testimony from officials will be taken for 15 minutes in total, or until there are no other officials who wish to speak, whichever comes first. All officials will have only one opportunity to provide testimony. Officials may not ask to return to the podium to make additional remarks or ask questions. Officials cannot yield time to another. Testimony must be relevant to the matter being considered by the Commission. Officials who are not providing relevant or respectful testimony will forfeit their time. If an official has a question for the applicant, that question must be addressed to the Commission and not to the applicant. The Commission will ask the applicant and/or their representatives to answer relevant audience questions after hearing from all speakers. Once all government bodies have spoke, the applicant will have an opportunity for final remarks. The Commission will ask the applicant and their representatives to return to the podium to answer any questions that they may have, or that may have been asked during the hearing. The applicant will also be given the opportunity to give any final remarks. The Planning Commission members will be given the opportunity to ask any final questions of the applicant. Once the public hearing portion is closed, we may take another break, and when we return, that's when the Planning Commission would do deliberations. At that point, no more testimony would be given. The Commission will discuss the application and may take action on the request. These rules are subject to being changed through the course of the meeting if need arises.
Okay, you've heard the procedures. With that, we will start the procedure, as Darren mentioned, with the applicant presentation.
Ed, I think what would be proper before we're hearing from the applicant, the county did hire an engineering company, USI, to review the application, and I think it would be appropriate to receive a report from USI on to whether or not the application is even complete before the Commission hears it.
You are correct. Representatives from USI are here, I believe. Would you be willing to give us your report?
Good afternoon.
So we were... Please state your name.
My name is Wyatt Huber with USI Consultants Incorporated. We were asked, USI is a firm, to review the W E C S C I U application submitted on behalf of Big Blue River Wind Farm LLC, and have completed that review. It was determined upon that completion that the submitted application meets all requirements as outlined in the Henry County Development Code Title 5, Section 9 zoning as applicable to wind energy conservation systems.
Any questions from the Planning Commission members for the representative from USI? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you. So I would just state for the record that USI's memo is, before everybody has been supplied ahead of time, but you all also have a packet. And to reiterate what Wyatt said, the report states it has been determined upon completion of review that the submitted application meets all requirements as outlawed and as outlined in the Henry County Development Code Title 5, Section 9 zoning, wind energy conversion systems. So upon their review and in our office's review, we would submit the application is complete and that the Planning Commission could move forward with the hearing.
Thank you. Now we move to the applicant, right?
Thank you very much for the time and opportunity this evening. My name is Jeffrey Bennett. I am an attorney with Bingham-Greenbaum-Dahl in Indianapolis, and I am here representing Big Blue River in connection with their commission-approved-use application tonight. With me is my co-counsel from my firm, my partner Matt Price, and also we have Wayne Parker, who is company counsel with Big Blue River as well. I was going to take the first couple of minutes and go over kind of some of what we had done in advance of the hearing with respect to notice and that sort of thing, but I think that's probably been generally covered already by the county's outside counsel. I will say, however, that the application, which has been online for a fair number of weeks now, does contain numerous documents that are required by the county's WEX ordinance, which we won't get into discussing in any great detail, simply because of the time constraints tonight. But I wanted to mention their existence, and they're certainly available for anyone to review who wishes to. These include required items such as a training agreement for emergency services, an indemnity agreement with the county, an escrow agreement, and as well as a fully-funded escrow account, all of which are required by the county's new ordinance. So that's not an exhaustive list of the documents that are available for review, but that is part of the application as well. To start things off, I would like to introduce Derek Reiman, who is the Director of Development for Big Blue River, to give the commissioners an overview of the project itself, and then we'll move into some more specific testimony on the part of some of the witnesses that we have here today relating to some of the other matters that are required by the ordinance. Derek?
Good evening. Derek Reiman, Director of Development for Calpine, on behalf of the Big Blue River Wind Farm. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. First, I'd like to start with a project description, which is contained in the application materials that we put forth before the Planning Commission. The Big Blue River Wind Farm is proposed as a wind energy conversion system project, up to 38 wind turbine generating units with associated access roads, collection lines, a project substation, including an alternative location. Additionally, we have also proposed a lay-down yard, a batch plant with alternative locations for each as well, including an operation-maintenance building which will be constructed in order to house the SCADA system and operating monitoring systems for the wind energy generating plant itself. And then lastly, we are also including performance towers, which would be erected as part of the construction of the project as well. The project will be contained in six townships, those being Fall Creek, Harrison, Henry, Greensboro, Prairie, and Jefferson. Given the kind of geographic context of the project, I'd like to provide a little bit of a history as to how Calpine and Big Blue River Wind Farm have gotten to where we are today. This project started in late 2015 through a series of desktop studies that Calpine performed in order to identify an appropriate location for a wind energy project. These studies entailed an analysis of the wind energy resource in the area, also involved a study involving the availability of high-voltage transmission in the area, land use suitability analysis, and also understanding the county wind energy ordinance that was in place at the time. During that period, we had original plans to develop a wind project containing 80 to 100 wind turbines, along with the associated infrastructure I just detailed moments ago. During that time, we initiated conversations with landowners in late 2015 and early 2016, given the fact that the initial desktop analysis that we performed indicated that there was a commercially viable wind energy project available in Henry County and the representative townships. During that period of time, we hosted a number of landowner engagement events, as well as community events, in order to introduce the community to Calpine, the Big Blue River Wind Farm project, and wind energy in general. During 2016, I gave presentations to the Economic Development Corporation, the Henry County County Council, the county commissioners, and then we also hosted events at the Moreland Fair and Sulphur Springs Days. In addition to that, we opened an office in Sulphur Springs and held regular business hours for folks in the community to come to our office, ask those questions about the project, and share information about the community benefits of a wind energy project in Henry County. As that outreach continued, we ultimately signed 88 long-term wind energy leases with landowners in those representative townships, which encapsulates over 17,000 acres of land. As part of our development process, as will be discussed later, we engaged in a number of environmental and transmission studies to ensure the opportunity to develop a project that would be commercially viable, ensuring that we were abiding by federal, state, and local regulations. During our initial outreach, we received a great deal of community feedback, and as a result of feedback that we were receiving, actually made adjustments to our project area in order to take into account feedback that we had receiving. So we made a general commitment to reduce the project size that we had originally planned to a northern border of US 36. Prior to that, we had originally been interested in locating the project north all the way to the Delaware County line. So in an effort to compromise and appease folks in the area, we made that adjustment. As we continue through the development process, as you are well aware, the county went through a very rigorous process to evaluate the terms and provisions of the wind energy ordinance that was adopted in 2010. The community, by and large, submitted a great deal of feedback from a variety of different stakeholders, and ultimately, a new wind energy ordinance was put into effect a little less than a year ago in 2018. This revised ordinance has a number of conditions that were much more rigorous than the 2010 wind energy ordinance, such as much more restrictive sound requirements, such that a sound of 43 dBa could not be any greater than 43 dBa at the outside exterior wall of a residence. Our turbines could not be any closer than 1,500 feet from an occupied dwelling, subject to, excuse me, consent or waiver from a representative landowner. Also, an additional restriction of 30 hours of shadow flicker was imposed. And most importantly, there are setbacks from all property boundaries that lie within the project area, namely 1.5 times the tip height of a wind turbine from a non-consenting property owner, and then under a waiver or consent, that restriction is reduced to 1.1 times the tip height of the wind turbine. After the wind energy ordinance was passed last year, we went through great lengths in order to abide by the new provisions in the ordinance. Given that new requirement, our project was reduced from a projected 80 to 100 turbines to now up to 38 turbines. So I think it's important to note that the new ordinance has taken a great deal of consideration of the public sentiment and information that was provided during the public hearings, and has thus addressed the size and scale of our project. So I think, given that fact, there has been compromise on both accords in order to allow this project to move forward and submit a permit application. I think lastly, I just would like to note, before I have the subject matter experts that have been engaged to perform the additional studies in the application packet, is that we did study five different types of wind turbine technology, as indicated in the first portion of the permit application. The rationale for including those turbines is given the fact that turbine technology has changed considerably over the past couple of years, and so we wanted to ensure that we study the most conservative turbine technology in each of the appropriate studies as part of this permit application. So that issue will be touched on later on with the presentations, but did want to highlight that fact at this point in time. With that, I would conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. I'd like to ask Lindsay Donahoe and Kaitlin Lashbrook to approach the podium. They are with EDR, the company's outside consultant. As you all are probably well aware, the county's new ordinance requires a number of detailed mapping items. Can you all hear me? I can't tell if the mic's picking up. To be included in the application package, and Lindsay and Kaitlin took the lead role in doing that, including setbacks and mapping of the project area, and they're going to talk briefly about their activities in connection with that. I see that most of you have the binders that we provided that contain the application, and the maps were included with those binders. We also have larger copies of them here with us, but we're kind of far away perhaps for you to see them. So let us know if you have questions later about that.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Donahoe, and I work with Environmental Design and Research as a project manager. As Jeff said, EDR was brought on to assist Big Blue River in their preparation of the commission-approved-use application. And our primary, one of our primary responsibilities was preparing the maps that depict these project components in relation to various recreational, environmental, and cultural resources as required by Section 9.6A of the Henry County Development Code. There are six sheets included in the site plan application, or the site plan within the application. The project layout is depicted on each of the site plan sheets and includes all the project components, including wind turbines, lay-down yards, O and M building, the power performance towers, substations, collection lines, and access roads. And that was also mapped in relation to the overall facility site and the local resources. As Derek touched on, the layout was defined through an iterative design process that accounted for various resources, including wetlands and streams, which are shown on Sheet 5 of the site plan, and setbacks, including those from primary residences, which are shown on Sheet 2. The wetland and stream delineations were performed by Cardno and will be discussed in greater detail a little later on. And the identification of primary residences was performed by another group, Fisher Associates, in 2018, and residences were identified out to a distance of at least two miles from the proposed turbines. EDR also mapped historic resources, which was included in Sheet 6 of the site plan, and those were obtained from Henry County, Indiana map, the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Division of Historic Preservation and Archaeology. EDR also consulted with the Indiana State Historic Architectural and Archaeological Research Database to review the location of archaeological sites in relation to the facility site. These sites and the facilities' lack of impact to these archaeological sites are detailed in the Archaeological Resources affidavit that's provided with the C I U application in Attachment I of the white binder. One of the main sheets I wanted to talk about tonight in the site plan was the setbacks map. It is a little complicated. It's four pages, and there's a lot of information in those pages. So the setback map shows the relationship of the proposed wind turbines in relation to the setbacks established by the county code. And setbacks define the minimum distance that a structure can be from a residential structure, property lines, roads, sensitive areas, and other local resources. The setbacks for this project were calculated based on the GE 2.5 127 megawatt turbine, as this is the tallest turbine under consideration for the project. Using the tallest turbine would produce the most conservative setbacks. If a smaller turbine was selected, it would be guaranteed to meet the setbacks that were defined in Sheet 2 of the application. The Henry County Code specifies four basic setbacks. The first, as Derek touched on, is 1.5 times the total height of the wind turbine tower height from any property line, roadway, railroad, right-of-way, and overhead transmission line and distribution lines. Most of those resources were, the data for those were obtained from Henry County itself, and the overhead transmission lines and distribution lines, that data was obtained from the Department of Homeland Security. The second setback is 1,500 feet, or three times the wind turbine tower height, whichever is greater, from primary buildings. As I mentioned before, primary buildings were investigated on a site-specific basis. The third setback is 200 feet from existing county-regulated ditch or waterways. This was also obtained from Henry County. And the fourth setback was five times the wind turbine height from an incorporated municipality property line of a public school, hospital, or nursing home. And that was also done based on parcel data obtained from Henry County. The Henry County Code, as Derek mentioned previously, also allows for a setback, a lesser setback, of 1.1 times the wind turbine height from property lines and primary structures if written consent from the property owner is obtained. In those instances, you'll see a note on Sheet 2 of the site plan where that consent was obtained. The gray areas on the map show the areas where turbines cannot be built due to the setback requirements, so there will only be turbines in those non-shaded areas. Moving on to another study included in the C I U application was the microwave analysis. This was conducted by ComSearch to evaluate the potential impacts on licensed, proposed, and applied non-federal government microwave systems. This study is included as Attachment N in the white binder to the C I U application. Microwave bands are essential for telecommunication infrastructure and provide long-distance and local telephone services, backhaul for cellular and personal communication service, and data interconnects for mainframe computers and the Internet. ComSearch identified all the microwave paths that intersect the area around the project, and from there, ComSearch calculated a Fresnel zone, which is a narrow area of signal swath around each microwave path. These Fresnel zones, along with areas directly in front of microwave antennas, need to be avoided by wind turbines in order to avoid interference. The microwave analysis identified seven microwave paths, including, or intersecting the overall project area. The Fresnel zones for these paths were calculated and mapped and are shown on Figures 3 and 4 of that microwave analysis. None of the project turbines were found to have potential obstructions with the microwave systems in the area. And in addition, the Fresnel zones were also included in the setbacks map in Sheet 2 of the site plan. Turbines were setback from Fresnel zones by 1.2 times the blade length of project turbines. The setback was not required by Henry County, but was an internal setback by Big Blue River to ensure that there'd be no impacts to microwave paths. The final report I'll touch on tonight is the socioeconomic memo. EDR prepared this memo to assess the economic benefits of the project. It's available in the supplemental filing in the black binder. Specifically, EDR used the Jobs and Economic Development Impact, or otherwise known as the JDI model, which is an industry-standard model, to investigate the economic impacts of wind energy facilities. The construction and operation of the project will have positive impacts throughout the local and statewide economy. Direct payments will occur in two forms. The first, lease payments to local landowners, and the second, property tax payments to local jurisdictions. The property tax payments will be made to Henry County and local school districts and public libraries in the area. The preliminary analysis, based on the current layout mapped in the C I U application, estimated to a total of approximately $21 million over the 25-year lifespan of the project to be paid to these local municipalities. This will provide additional revenue for government services, schools, road upgrades, and other municipal infrastructure on an annual basis. With respect to employment, the JDI model indicates that the construction of the project will generate 60 will generate 63 full-time equivalent onsite jobs for Indiana residents with an annual earnings total of $3.7 million. Operation of the project is estimated to generate five full-time jobs with a combined estimated earnings of approximately $300,000 per year. These jobs in the operational phase are anticipated to include technicians, project management, and administrative personnel positions. In addition to job creations and earnings, the Jedi Model also assessed economic output, which provides a general measurement of the amount of profit earned by manufacturers, retailers, and service providers connected to that given project. The economic output associated with the project is estimated to be $46.2 million for project construction and $2 million for project operation. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Lindsay. The county's wind energy ordinance requires that a sound emission study be performed in connection with this application, and one was done by an outside engineering firm, Burns &amp; McDonnell in this case. You'll find that report under Tab F in the white binder, and it's also posted online. This time, I'd like to ask Chris Howell with the engineering firm that performed that study to approach the podium and explain how that was done.
Thank you. My name is Chris Howell. I am an environmental engineer with Burns &amp; McDonnell Engineering. I have a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, and I've done graduate coursework in acoustics as long, as well as ongoing training courses in different types of predictions, mitigation, and other types of...
Either move closer to the mic or speak up, if you would, please.
You bet. Sorry about that. All right, is that better? All right. So I mentioned that I have a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering. I've taken graduate courses in acoustics, considerable amount of ongoing education in the acoustics field specifically. I am an elected member of the Institute of Noise Control Engineers. It requires a rigorous review of my academic and professional background, as well as I have to be recommended by another member of the society. I have 19 years of experience in environmental engineering. Seventeen of that is specific to acoustics. I've done acoustic studies for well over 5 gigawatts' worth of wind farms, and my role specifically in this project was to analyze the sound impacts of the identified turbines, how the impacts would affect the nearby identified residences, and then potentially mitigation if necessary. Real quick, I'll talk about the criteria that was identified. I'll mention the predictive modeling that we completed, and then I'll talk about the results of that. So there are no federal or state rules here applicable to this type of project. Henry County ordinance does specifically limit noise. I believe Derek mentioned it, 43 decibels is the level that's required here. That is an overall sound level, and it's at no point of any primary building or structure, whether they're participating or not. So every residence, every school, things like that were analyzed. Specific to the modeling that we performed, we used industry-standard peer-review methodology. We use a model called CADNA-A. It's based on International Standard ISO 9613. It's very well-known, very well-accepted within the acoustical community for predicting sound, and specifically being used for wind farms as needed. We modeled 38 wind turbines. Anything less than 38, if it's 38, would be applicable for our model that we've done to date. We included terrain in the model. However, we did not include half of the available ground absorption. So that's a conservative assumption that we make, where we assume that some of the ground is reflective. And that's a fairly conservative, but also industry-standard for wind farms. We did not include any foliage or anything like that, so if there are stands of trees, we did not include structures such as buildings, barns, anything like that. So any of that would have benefited the noise model, so we excluded them. So that's another conservative assumption we made there. We did model both a Siemens-Gamesa unit and a GE unit, and we modeled several other iterations as well. Specifically, the Siemens-Gamesa, though, was identified as the worst-case scenario for this, so I'll talk about that specifically since it was the worst-case scenario. Wind turbines make sound mostly the whoosh that you hear, the blades spinning through the air. The Siemens-Gamesa was identified as having an overall sound power level that was the highest of any of the turbines we looked at. That was applied as a single source in space, which is an industry-standard way of doing it. When you get far enough away from any source, it looks like a point in space. We use the expected hub height for the turbine, the 87 meters, and various other criteria that are all conservative. And I'm blowing through this fairly quickly, so if you have a question, say something. All of the impacts modeled at all of the identified receptors, it's an aggregated value, so every receiver received some sort of impact from every single turbine in the model, whether that impact was zero, or that impact was 35, or something like that. The model took every single one of those and logarithmically added them together to get a cumulative value from the entire wind farm at each residence, school, building, things like that. It's a fairly conservative model because it assumes that every single turbine is downwind of the house, or I'm sorry, upwind of the house. So the receiver is downwind of the turbines. So if you have two turbines on either side of a receiver in the middle, it's assuming that the wind is blowing inward at all times. So it's fairly, another fairly conservative assumption. The initial models did show some exceedances. They were all fairly low amounts, I believe. So noise-reduction operation modes were considered for this. These are standard packages that you can buy from the different vendors, and they will limit the overall noise level by limiting the output generally. Applying certain noise-reduction modes to certain turbines, it's identified in the back of the application, I believe in Appendix C, those are listed, which turbines got noise-reduction modes. Applying those, there would be no exceedances of the Henry County ordinance. And that's generally what I have at this point.
The Henry County zoning ordinance also requires, or has provisions governing what's called shadow flicker, and that is just what it sounds like, but we'll, we have someone here to explain that to some extent, and also a study that was performed in order to make sure the project was within the requirements of the ordinance. You do have the shadow flicker report under Tab G of the white binder, and I'd like to ask Aaron Anderson to approach the podium to discuss that. He also worked on a decommissioning analysis unrelated to shadow flicker, but since he did the work on, I'll have him discuss both of those at the same time while he's up here. And the decommissioning analysis was an analysis of what would be required in the future in terms of dollars in order to decommission the project when it's no longer in operation in the future. So with that, I'll ask Aaron to come forward and explain the work that he did on both of those reports.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Anderson. I am a project manager with Burns &amp; McDonnell Engineering Company based in Kansas City. Similar to Chris, I was engaged on this project to support the modeling of the wind turbines. Specifically, first here, I'll talk about shadow flicker and what that means and what sort of results we had, then we'll talk a little bit about decommissioning and what that looked like. In terms of my background, I have undergraduate degrees in physics and mechanical engineering. I have a master's degree in engineering management. I'm also a licensed professional engineer in multiple states. My team has done shadow flicker studies like these in numerous states. We've done dozens and dozens of these in different areas, all very similar to what I'm going to tell you about today. If you're not familiar with shadow flicker, it's a very simple phenomenon. Shadow flicker occurs when the wind turbine blades are in operation, and they pass in front of the sun. And what happens is that the, this recurring shadow effect happens as the sun passes through the blades and causes this varying intensity of light and dark, or shadow flicker, as it's sometimes called. Now, what's important to realize is that shadow flicker can only happen under very specific situations. For example, in order for a shadow to occur, there has to be light. Shadow, by definition, cannot happen in the dark, so we only evaluate this during daytime hours. We only evaluate it when a turbine is in operation, because otherwise, it's simply a shadow. It's not a flickering shadow. We evaluate wind direction. We evaluate what way the turbines are facing. We look at receptors or houses throughout the wind farm and where they're at situated relative to a turbine. And we compile all of those in a model, a piece of software called WindPro. WindPro is the industry-standard software for evaluating shadow flicker. This is the one that we used here. Simply put, it takes every minute of a year. It evaluates the sun's position. It evaluates every single turbine within the wind farm and what direction a shadow would be cast, if any. And then it accumulates those. It aggregates them at every point within the wind farm, and those are the results that we end up presenting. Now, the ordinance within Henry County is very simple. It says that shadow flicker, modeled shadow flicker cannot exceed 30 hours per year. 30 hours is a very typical industry benchmark, and what I'm going to show you here in a minute is that we have, in fact, or the project has, in fact, complied with that regulation. Now, a number of inputs, key parameters go into the model, and I wanted to mention a few of those because what I want your takeaway to be is that the model in and of itself is very conservative, similar to what Chris described for, for noise modeling. For example, we model a receptor or a house, a place where someone is living, or somewhere where we want to model shadow flicker, as having windows on every single side. So there is no direction that we would assume that a shadow being cast would not be seen, which of course isn't true. You'll have walls without windows. You'll have bedrooms. You'll have curtains, et cetera. We haven't modeled any obstructions at the site, so no silos, no garages, no tree lines, hedgerows, barns, et cetera, that might block a shadow from occurring. And we've evaluated all of the terrain within the project site, so that if a turbine, for example, were up elevated relative to all of the receptors, we would see how far that shadow would actually be cast. What results from all of this is that of all of the receptors that we evaluated, before we did any sort of adjustments, only seven of all of those, which, to be frank, based on my experience, is a very low number relative to what we would typically see for a project of this size, only seven of those receptors in total had shadow flicker exceeding 30 hours per year. So what we did is a second step in order to comply with the ordinance that says modeled shadow flicker, i.e. what's actually modeled within the model itself cannot exceed 30, is we manually applied curtailment. And what that means is we can manipulate the operation of the turbine to say, do not operate within specific times of day or specific times of year. And as a result, we took each one of those seven receptors that was above 30 in the base-case conservative model. We applied curtailment, or derating, if you will, to those, and when all was said and done, each and every one of those was below 30, which complies with, again, what the, what the ordinance here in Henry County requires. That's shadow flicker. Let's put on our decommissioning hats and switch gears. Decommissioning is very different. However, we are an engineering firm first and foremost, and designing, building, working on and consulting on wind farms is what we do, so decommissioning comes very natural. Decommissioning, simply put, is what we do with the wind farm at the end of its useful life. So when it's no longer, when the turbines are no longer operating, when the plant is no longer in use, what happens to the facility? So the entire purpose of this study is to evaluate that, to figure out what it's going to take financially and in terms of logistics and planning to remove the wind farm and all of the facilities, and return it back to what it looks like today before there's any sort of operation out there. Again, the ordinance is fairly straightforward, and what it requires for decommissioning is very similar to shadow flicker. And what it says is that any above-grade facilities, anything that the project would build, has to be removed. Any below-grade facilities have to be removed to a depth of four feet below grade, which, again, is very typical of what we see throughout the country. So what we did is we evaluated the entire project configuration. We looked at every turbine, every road, every overhead electrical line, the substation, buildings that would be constructed. And to very simply summarize, anything that was above grade that you would see just walking around, we included time, effort, and cost estimates to remove those. Anything below grade, we have removed to a depth of at least four feet. And then any of those voids or holes that would be created from removing that equipment would be filled in. We would grade it, and we would seed it at the end of the useful life. A couple important things to point out that people always ask about, probably the most important are the wind turbines and how we're going to get those down. So our estimate includes a crane and a crew to remove those components one at a time. So for example, that crane and a crew would remove the blades. Those blades would be cut up on the ground, and they would be hauled off for disposal. Blades, the three that you would see on a wind turbine, are made of fiberglass. They have real no salvageable value, so they would be hauled to a landfill. Then a cell, which is the big box that you see on top of the turbine, has a fair amount of equipment in it. There's a generator, a gearbox, a number of other things. Any salvageable equipment out of that would be processed on the site. We would remove that. And then any debris that's left, similar to the blades, would be hauled off and taken to a landfill. Any salvageable equipment would be taken to a salvage yard to be recycled. And then last but not least with wind turbines are the towers themselves, which are just large, basically steel cans. Steel in and of itself is a commodity, so those, again, would be processed and hauled off for salvaging. So again, everything above grade removed, everything below grade removed to a depth of four feet. At the end of the day, what we're trying to accomplish is, again, returning it to what it looks like today. The total cost estimate for doing all that, inclusive of salvage value, like we talked about, including a 5% upcharge that we apply for owner indirects, so that would be the the project's fee for managing subcontractors, engineering costs, et cetera, associated with that, of 5%, plus an additional 10% contingency that we put all, on top of all that works out to roughly $1.3 million. So that's the ultimate result of the decommissioning study. I understand there's an agreement between the county and the project, and some sort of financial instrument prior to construction would be put in place for that amount to ensure that if for any reason the project ever needed to be decommissioned earlier prior to its useful life, that financial instrument would be in place, so there would hopefully be no concern that the, the project would be able to walk away from its responsibility there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Calpine commissioned a study, I believe a couple of years ago, to look at the history of, of real estate transactions and market values in Indiana counties at which wind farms had already been constructed, to determine what, if any, impact those wind farms, either during construction or afterwards, would have upon real estate values in Indiana counties where they've been built. We had a licensed appraiser that did that work. Unfortunately, she has retired and is no longer available to discuss her work, but her work product is included in your materials in the black supplemental binder number 2, Tab I. And we have today David Hall, who's also a licensed Indiana appraiser, who reviewed that original report and has comments to, to make concerning that.
Good evening. As Jeff said, my name is David Hall. I'm a licensed commercial real estate appraiser here in the state of Indiana, and I'm currently employed as a managing director with Integra Realty Resources in Indianapolis. My testimony tonight, as Jeff mentioned, pertains to three consulting reports that were completed by another real estate appraisal firm. That's the Pillar Valuation Group. Those three reports, which I believe are in your binders, binder 2, Tab I, I believe. Sure, sorry. Those reports analyze the impact of wind farms on neighboring properties from a property-value perspective. The study areas for those three reports include White County, Benton County, and Tipton and Madison Counties, and I believe those two counties were analyzed collectively. I should note again that I'm not the author. I was asked to review the data, methodology, and conclusions contained in those reports, and then share my own opinions with you about the quality of the work. To keep my comments brief, I'll summarize the four questions that I asked when I was reviewing those three reports. Number one, what is being studied? Number two, is the data sufficient and reliable? Number three is the methodology... Number three, is the methodology sound? And number four, are the conclusions credible and well-supported? Question one, what is being studied? Each report analyzes the impact of wind turbines, both proposed and built, on a particular residential real estate market. And, again, the study areas include White, Benton, Tipton, and Madison Counties, and more specifically, the areas within a one-mile and one-half-mile radius of existing and proposed wind turbines. Question two, is the data sufficient and reliable? In my opinion, the data contained in each report is sufficient and reliable. The study of Tipton and Madison Counties contains sales data for more than 100 homes that were located within a one-mile radius of a wind turbine that was, again, either existing or proposed at the time of sale. The sales data is recent, and it was obtained from the local multiple listing service, which typically is a reliable source for residential sales information. The White County report contains sales data for more than 200 properties, and the study of Benton County contains sales data for more than 700 properties. The reports also contain data for dozens of paired sales, in which a property was sold before wind turbine was announced or constructed, and then resold after the turbine was announced or built. Additionally, the reports contain information reported by 17 real estate agents and brokers who helped to buy or sell a property located within a one-mile radius of a wind turbine. Question three, is the methodology in those reports you have sound? In my opinion, the methodologies used in the reports are appropriate and consistent with standard appraisal practice. Essentially, in these three reports, several questions are being asked and analyzed. Number one, do home prices rise or fall when a wind turbine is announced or built? Number two, do homes near wind turbines take longer to sell? Number three, are homes located near wind turbines less likely to sell? Number four, does the rate of foreclosure increase near wind turbines? Number five, does proximity to a wind turbine impact the gap between asking and sale prices? And number six, are real-world buyers and sellers reporting any impact on price or the day's own market? The consulting reports done by the Pillar Group address these questions with data that can be easily and reliably measured, and they rely on methods that, again, are widely used in routine appraisal practice. Last question, are the conclusions in the reports credible and well-supported? Essentially, all three reports conclude that there is no observable indication of an impact, either negative or positive, on the residential real estate markets that surround the wind farms in White, Benton, Tipton, and Madison Counties. In my opinion, these conclusions are reasonable, credible, and well-supported based on the information contained in each report. Additionally, the conclusions are consistent with recent academic research. As an example, I would refer to one of the largest known studies. It was a research effort completed in 2014 that looked at more than 50,000 home sales in 27 counties and nine states. The study was conducted by authors affiliated with Texas A&amp;M University, San Diego State University, the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, and the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City. Essentially, the study concluded that home prices near wind turbines were not significantly impacted, again, either negatively or positively, by either the announcement of a wind turbine or the construction of one. In closing, I would note that I prepared a brief two-page letter that I believe you've been provided with. And, again, should time allow, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David. The ordinance does require that wetlands be analyzed as part of the proposed development, and we do also have a report in your binders that addresses that in great detail. That's contained in black supplement binder number one, under tab C. And we have with us today Ryan Ruprecht, who is with the company that performed that study, and he would like to say a few words about that. Ryan?
My name is Ryan Ruprecht. I'm a senior project manager with Cardinal. Cardinal was asked to delineate all wetlands and water bodies within the proposed corridor of the project. We studied the area of the corridor as a 200-foot-wide corridor centered on the proposed infrastructure, as well as 250 feet around each of the proposed turbine locations. We followed the U.S. Army Corps manual, as well as the Midwest supplemental manual, as well as any additional requirements from Indiana DEM under the Isolated Wetland Program. In total, there were 16 wetlands delineated within the corridor, 21 water bodies. Most of these, through microsighting, could be avoided, although no final engineering designs have been provided, and therefore, no impact analysis has been completed. Any additional impacts to these resources would need to be authorized through the U.S. Army Corps, Lewis Village District, and/or the Indiana DEM Isolated Wetlands Program. In total, there was 14.8 acres of wetlands and 15, about 15,000 linear feet of streams within that area. Those were the findings of the wetland delineation. Cardinal also evaluated a habitat evaluation and found that consistent with the desktop evaluation, and found that over 95% of the project is proposed in active agricultural fields and held very minimal ecological uplift to the area. That's it. Thank you.
Big Blue River commissioned studies concerning potential impacts upon avian birds or bats that might be existing because of the project, and we have in your materials those reports as well. Those are contained in black binder tab D. And I'd like to introduce Rhett Good, who prepared those studies, and we'll say a few words about those as well.
My name is Rhett Good. I'm a research biologist with West Incorporated. I have a bachelor's degree in biology from Ball State University, a master's in zoology from the University of Wyoming, and I have 20 years of experience researching the impacts of wind energy on birds and bats and other wildlife. We completed two studies at the site. The first was a study of bird use, which followed all of the guidelines outlined by the Fish and Wildlife Service in the Eagle Conservation Plan and the land-based wind energy guidelines. The study lasted approximately one year. Surveys were completed at 46 points. Approximately 500 hours of survey effort was completed. I won't go into the details of all the bird scene, but the overall results suggest that the levels of use and species observed are similar to other wind energy projects in Indiana and other Midwest agricultural landscapes, and the impacts are expected to be similar to those other projects, which are low relative to bird species populations. There were only seven eagles observed, over 500 hours of effort at the site. Of those seven eagles observed, only three minutes were eagles observed flying within the rotorcept area, the approximate height of a turbine. Common species observed included European starling, red-winged blackbird, horned lark, Canada goose, turkey vulture, red-tailed hawk. These are really common species you see in most agricultural landscapes. There were no species observed that were protected under the Federal Endangered Species Act. Two state endangered species were observed during surveys, the northern harrier and the osprey. Both species are expected to be at relatively low risk to wind turbines. Only a few osprey were observed during surveys, so they are really rare. Northern harriers are rare in the summer, but they're relatively common during the migration winter seasons. They fly at very low heights and have very low susceptibility to turbine collisions. Five state species of concern were observed. Bald eagles, I mentioned, common nighthawk, red-shouldered hawk, sandhill crane, and strippeded hawk were observed. And I believe Cardinal observed one short-eared owl during their wetland delineations. But, again, all of those species are observed either in relatively low numbers, or their biology is such where they have relatively low susceptibility to wind turbine collisions. There was also a raptor nest survey completed at the site, within a much larger area than what the turbines encompass. The survey was completed from the ground, within two miles of the project boundary. Purpose was to identify if there are any eagle nests within the project area. No eagle nests were observed within two miles of the project. The Fish and Wildlife Service did report three nests at the time within 10 miles of the facility, but there are none within two miles of the boundary that we're aware of. There were 55 other nest structures observed of common species in Indiana, such as red-tailed hawk or great horned owl. We have reviewed the results of the avian use surveys with the Fish and Wildlife Service, and they agreed the risk to bald eagles at the site was relatively low. We also completed a bat surveys at the project, designed to determine if threatened or endangered bat species were present within the project. Those surveys followed U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service guidelines. 28 sites were surveyed using acoustic bat detectors in the summer of 2016. No northern long-eared bats were identified within the site. That's a threatened species in Indiana. However, Indiana bat was confirmed as present within the project. And this is similar to other wind energy projects, but we're in the heart of Indiana bat range within the state of Indiana, and every project within Indiana has to assess risks to bats and develop measures to reduce those impacts. So this is no different than other wind projects in Indiana. The project will develop and implement a bat habitat conservation plan in coordination with the Fish and Wildlife Service and the DNR to ensure those impacts are minimized to the extent practical. And that's the summary of my surveys. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhett. We're coming towards the end of our hour, and I want to just sort of wrap up by focusing briefly upon the three statutory findings, which the Planning Commission would need to make in order to approve the request that we've made tonight. I know you're all very familiar with that, with what those are. The first one is that the proposed use is placed in a permitted zoning district. I think that's relatively straightforward, given that it's associated with agricultural purposes. It also is considered to be a utility use, and utility uses are expressly allowed in ag areas. The second requirement is that the requirements set forth in the zoning district and Procedure Section of the zoning ordinance are met. We think that's also very clear in this case, because the project as submitted complies with the provisions of the process requirements in the Procedure Section of the ordinance. And then, lastly, as you know, kind of a catch-all provision, the proposed use is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance, will not substantially and permanently injure the appropriate use of the neighboring property, and will serve the public convenience and welfare. We think all of those things are clearly met. The project won't have a negative effect on public convenience or welfare, as it'll comply with all operational safety and setback requirements. There are significant environmental benefits, excuse me, economic benefits that we've talked about, estimated $21 million in property taxes over 25 years, temporary and full-time jobs, and essentially a ripple effect across the economy to some extent, as that is discussed in the socioeconomic memo that we have. It will not impede the normal and ordinary development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district, because the WEX project is located in a predominantly rural area with predominantly agricultural use that's consistent with this use, adequate utilities, access roads, et cetera, and also agreements that have been reached already with the county concerning roads and transportation, decommissioning, and so forth. In short, we believe that the application as submitted meets all of the statutory criteria for commission-approved use under the Henry County ordinance, and we respectfully ask that the commission-approved use be granted. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you. That fulfills the first part of it, and as Darren mentioned earlier, he's got a break penciled in here, so...
I don't know, before we take a break, if it makes sense for the commission to ask the applicant questions. That's up to you, Mr. President.
Dale, has a question. Use your mic, please.
I've got a few questions, really. No particular order, but may have been said, but the first question I've got is White County.
Yes, as I stated in my initial comments, the rationale for selecting Henry County for a potential wind energy conversion system project is multifold. One, the wind resource here in the project area is commercially viable. That means the energy that would be produced by the project would be available for sale on the electricity markets at a competitive price. There is availability on the high-voltage transmission lines that run through the project area to transport that electricity to market. There is wind energy ordinance that has been adopted, in which various requirements have been put forth, and is our assertion that the application before the commission meets all of those requirements. And then, lastly, the land use is consistent with other wind energy projects, that meaning that the agricultural nature of the project area is compatible with wind energy projects.
Okay, and the second question is, underground water, could it possibly have an effect on underground water?
Yes, based on the information that we have to date, the project will not require any type of blasting in order to install the foundations that would be required at the wind turbine foundations.
Our county has a lot of volunteer firemen. Due to a fire, what kind of safety program do you have set up to educate these firemen?
Yes, we have an agreement in place with the county that has been submitted as part of the application materials, agreeing to establish a training program for Henry County emergency service personnel, as well as local fire departments with towns encapsulating the project area. In addition to that requirement, there is also the opportunity for counties that are surrounding Henry, that being Madison, Delaware, Wayne, Randolph, to participate in those training sessions.
Have you ever experienced a fire with any of the...
I'm sorry?
Have you ever experienced any fire with wind turbines?
I have not personally experienced fire at a wind turbine. However, there have been documented fires that have taken place at wind farms, and the protocol established to deal with that type of situation is to alert the public. The project will have operation and maintenance staff here in the community to alert the public and local emergency service staff. The typical procedure will be developed with the manufacturer of the wind turbine, and the standard protocol is to let the nacelle, which is the casing with the gearbox, et cetera, to burn out. There will be a safety perimeter around the turbine to ensure that there are not any individuals that will be walking or in close proximity to the turbine, and then local fire staff would be available to help secure the perimeter to ensure that there is not any additional brush fire that could be a product of the fire at the wind turbine.
Trying to think of a word. The flaps. Do they, in the wintertime, do they, for ease, have a tendency to collect ice?
You are correct. There is opportunity for the wind turbine blades to collect ice, and that is something that is monitored by remote sensors that are located on the wind turbine blades themselves. And so these sensors are linked to a fiber optic network that transmit that type of information to the operations and maintenance buildings. So there is a control center that monitors each and every turbine within the project area, and these sensors can detect additional weight that would be located on the blades, such as with ice. And so the standard protocol is to shut down turbines that have ice that's collecting on the blades, and then there is additional prot- And then there is additional protocols for instances in which personnel are located in the project area to seek and observe if there is ice that may be dropping off of the blades, but typically that ice is dropping relatively close to the turbine foundation itself.
I'll let somebody else go.
I have a few questions. Do you agree with Aaron from Apex when asked at the State House Rep. as to whether or not there's any scientific studies showing an adverse health effect of industrial wind turbines on humans? Her response was absolutely none.
I'm not familiar with that comment, no.
Are there any baseline property value studies done here in Henry County as done in Benton, Tipton, and White County?
There have not been any baseline real estate transaction studies that have been performed by the Big Blue River Wind Farm. That being said, as Mr. Hall stated earlier, the studies that have been submitted reviewed real estate transactions in the development period, in the construction period, and the operational period. And I would defer to Mr. Hall if he has any additional information that he would like to include in order to address your question.
Okay. Yes, as you've noted, I believe you have some studies in your report done by Pillar, and you're correct, those counties were Tipton, Benton, Madison, and White, I believe, those counties. To my knowledge, at least our office, we have not engaged in any sort of mass-market study of this county. However, I know that there have been a few fairly comprehensive studies. I think I alluded to one earlier. I've not checked into kind of the granular data, but I do know that there have been several that spanned multi-states. I'd have to research that study to know if this particular region was a part of that.
Okay. Are you aware of the Clarkston University, New York, study, which is a longitudinal study done over nine years of 11,369 properties, one to three miles away from industrial wind turbines, and they found the average property value devaluation of 15.6 to 31% of those 11,000? That is peer-reviewed, the term that you like to throw around.
Yes, I have not read that study, no.
Are you aware of the McCain Appraisal LLC in Chicago study that industrial wind farms impact to homes up to two miles away, range of 25 to about 40% of property value loss?
I know people have feeling, strong feelings in this room, but if we could act with a little more dignity, I would certainly appreciate it.
Are you aware that Ontario Superior Court of Justice determined in 2013, living near wind farms experienced lower property values on the range of 22 to 55%?
Again, I would reiterate that the purpose of my engagement was to simply review the studies that you have before you that are specific to Indiana counties, and that was the scope of my work.
Okay. Is there any reason that the four-mile safety barrier made legal under home rule and grandfathered and supported by Senate Bill 535, adopted by the town boards of Caddis, Kennerd, Mount Summit, and Sulphur Springs, than Greensboro have been totally ignored?
The board is probably aware that there have been some lawsuits filed in connection with those town limits. Those lawsuits did not name the county, and they will certainly be sorted out one way or the other by a judge and by the parties' litigants in those matters as they go forward. I would simply submit that your Henry County zoning ordinance gives us a procedure that we are to follow, and it vests in this body the right and ability to make a determination on a commission-approved use. To the extent that those ordinances are an attempt to do local town zoning, that is a function that is reserved to the county in this instance, and we are simply following the procedure laid out by law, and I don't think there's anything in any of those ordinances that affect your jurisdiction to consider this. I would also add that those things will be sorted out in due course in the context of that litigation, and it seems to me that the Planning Commission is free to proceed under the laws that permit it to do what it does.
Okay. The Henry County WEXS has a requirement to test sound from 8 to 8,000 Hz, yet the sound study indicated used ANSI, which prescribes octave bands from 8 to 31.5, and according to the predictive modeling software packages used in this study, did not go below 31.5, even though the WEXS required analyzed sound from 8 to 8,000, it did not go below 31.5. And the report further says that it should be noted that compliance noise measurements can be collected down to 6 Hz with typical equipment. Is there a reason it didn't go below 31.5 when the actual WEXS requires down to 8, and there's equipment that is typically available to test compliance noise measurements down to 6? Why were they not used?
If I may, I'd like to have Chris Howell come up to the podium to address that as he was, the consultant performed that study.
So you're talking about two different things. The predictive study is modeling, apologies. So you're talking about two different things. The predictive study is modeling, and the model itself will only go down to 31.5 Hz. However, all of the octave band frequencies provided by the vendors are included in that aggregated number. So your ordinance for Henry County is a single overall value that is an aggregate of all of those individual frequencies. So we did look at all of those frequencies for the modeling analysis itself. However, the model itself can only give out 31.5 through 8,000 results, and then an aggregated overall value for comparison to your limits. Now, for compliance demonstration, measurements down at 8 Hz and below to 6 Hz would be collected, and that would be provided as demonstration of compliance.
But it hasn't yet in the initial reports.
There is no operational wind farm yet, so that data cannot be collected.
Okay. Would you, would somebody from the company or representative give their opinion on wind turbine syndrome by Nina Pierpoint, and whether they believe that that work from her, and she is a pediatrician, MD and PhD, if that is a valid study?
Yeah, I don't have the study in front of me, but I am familiar with Dr. Nina Pierpoint, and as I would say is that I don't have any information available to me that would suggest that that information has been peer-reviewed or has been validated with other scientific peer-reviewed studies.
Okay. Well, it has indeed been peer-reviewed by Jack Golliner, Director Emeritus of John Hopkins It has been peer-reviewed by Jerome Howler, MD, Professor of Neurology and Pediatrics, Albany Medical College. He's also a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Neurology, and the Child Neurology Society. It's also been peer-reviewed by Joel Lehrer, MD, Fellow of the American College of Surgeons, Clinical Professor, I can't pronounce this, but it has to do with the Ornithological University of Medicine and Dentistry in New Jersey, formerly Professor of Ornithological Mount Sinai School of Medicine, New York. It's been peer-reviewed by Ralph Katz, MD, MD, PM, PH, Ph.D., Fellow of American Ecology of Epidemiology at Professor and Chair Department of Epidemiology and Health Promotion, New York University, and Henry Horn, Ph.D., Professor of Ecology and Evolutionary Biology and Associate of the Princeton Environmental Institute, Princeton University, Princeton, New Jersey. And yet, the literature that I've read has the wind industry trying to destroy her reputation in article, research article after research article claiming, in multiple studies and research that I've done over the past three years, that is not peer-reviewed, and it's all in people's head. Is there a reason that you have only prepared and shared three health-related human effect studies?
Those studies that were presented within the application materials demonstrate peer-reviewed science in respectable economic, excuse me, medical journals that suggest that there is no documented correlation between wind energy turbines and health impacts.
I did a quick Google study asking for peer-reviewed research on effects of industrial wind turbines on human health, and came up with no fewer than 30, and over half of those presented were peer-reviewed and indicated researched, documented health, adverse health effects to human beings, and yet none of those were presented to this body. And that's the reason I asked the question. Do you believe what Aaron, when asked by a State House representative, are there any scientific studies showing an adverse health effect of industrial wind turbines on humans? She said absolutely none, which is a lie. I found in three hours 30 of them, reviewed by scientists like the ones that I read to you, just on Nina Pierpoint. I have five of them here. They all document by renowned scientists, human health effects, and most of them are from one to three miles away. You realize how far away you are able, through our WEXS, to put a 500-foot wind turbine with the blades going 205 miles per hour at its tips? Point 28 miles. And yet I found 30 studies that show human health effects from one to three miles away, documented in about six different countries. Most of those countries have had wind turbines for 20 to 30 years, whereas the United States, with the exception of California, and I'll go up north of the border, Ontario, have had them for about 15 to 20 years.
How many of those studies included it in the United States?
The majority of them.
So the majority?
The majority, yes. But the first ones that were done back around 2010, 2014, that I researched, were done in other countries that had at least a 10-year longitudinal record of the long-term effects of industrial wind turbines on livestock, on human beings, on health effects, on birds, especially bats. One bat expert in England reported that they are decimating the bat population in the British Isles by the hundreds of thousands. And what happens to bats? They're not chopped up. Their radar sense of communications and how they fly keeps them away from the blades. They get close to the blades, and they've done, they've done studies, basically, and found that their lungs explode. They're not chopped up, they're small, and they fly around. When they get close, when they've done an autopsy of bats, and you want to talk about the ecological effect when you kill off thousands of buzzards and hundreds of thousands of bats with a mosquito population and the carry and the disease that's left behind, and none of those studies are shared. You gave three studies. One of them is paid for by a renewable energy concern in Ontario. And that's the MIT prof. That study was paid for by a renewable energy consortium under the government of Ontario, which recently passed regulations saying they're going to have 50% of their energy produced by wind and solar. When I was working on my doctor degree at Ball State University, one of the things that they told us when we were working on our dissertation and our research studies was to check who paid for the research for bias. I did that with the three studies, and every one of them are supported by entities that, when you read the abstract, are pro-renewable energy, and they put in their summary how the world is falling apart and it's going to destroy itself because of global warming. And if we don't use renewable energies, it's going to be the demise of the world. And if you say that's not biased, I don't know what is. I've said enough for this room.
I've had a request for a bathroom break, so is there anybody else who has a question for the applicant before we do that? Hearing none, we will take a short break.
Thank you.
There's an hour and a half.
The speakers are all out in the audience.
Yeah.
And all you get back here are reverberations.
Yeah, yeah, they were very hard.
Yeah. I'm not even, I'm not a person.
To be honest with you.
How much time do you think we have, Darren?
Okay, we're gonna move ahead here. I think Darren is collecting the sheets. We're gonna move on to those who are in support of the applicant, the application. So Darren, you said you wanted to go through a couple of things before we started with that part of the evening's activities.
So I just wanted to go through the procedure again, so everyone's aware. Again, so we will be taking those who wish to speak and support for one hour in total. One hour in total will be allotted to hear from members of the public who wish to speak and support the proposed project. Speakers will be called to the microphone off of the sign-up sheet in the order in which they signed up. All speakers must clearly state their name and county of residence prior to speaking. Individuals will be given a maximum of three minutes each to speak. Attorneys representing multiple individuals will be given a maximum of nine minutes to speak, provided that they state their representation as such prior to speaking. Public testimony and support will be taken for one hour in total or until there are no other speakers in support, whichever comes first. All speakers will have only one opportunity to provide testimony. Speakers may not ask to return to the podium to make additional remarks or ask questions. Speakers cannot yield time to another speaker. Testimony must be relevant to the matter being considered by the commission. Speakers who are not providing relevant or respectful testimony will forfeit their time. If a speaker has a question for the applicant, that question must be addressed to the commission and not the applicant. The commission will ask the applicant and/or their representatives to answer relevant audience questions after hearing from all speakers. We have two microphones. There is one up front here where the applicant has been making their presentation. There is also one in the back. I will be calling names off the list, and I will call who is first, and then I will also say who is on deck next. When you come to the microphone, please make sure you're speaking clearly and loudly into the microphone and give your name and county residence. We would also ask that all members of the public are polite and will respect the speakers and the commission, and allow the speakers to give their testimony, so that everyone can hear what's being said. So, 6:48, we will begin those who wish to speak and support. The first person up is Laura Ann Arnold, and I apologize if I misspell any, or missay any names. And then next is Jared Noblet. So Laura Ann Arnold, Jared Noblet on deck.
Somebody before me was very tall. Yes, that is my name. I am a resident of Marion County in Indianapolis. I'm not a resident of Henry County. I want to give some perspective from a national and state perspective on these issues as you begin to deliberate. I've been at a meeting, a national meeting of the National Association of Regulatory Utility Commissioners, this last two days in Indianapolis. They have had on their agenda, looking at implementation of 100% clean energy goals and targets in other parts of the country. More and more states, cities, utilities, and corporations are passing laws and setting targets and goals for achieving 100% clean, carbon-free, or renewable energy as the long-term expectation for meeting electricity needs. Many states have developed aggressive targets for renewable, carbon-free, energy resource procurement while retiring legacy generation, i.e., coal-fired power plants. This is not just happening in some other part of the country like California or the East Coast. This is happening here in Indiana, maybe not right here in Henry County. I have been participating for the last five or six years in all of the five investor-owned electric utilities integrated resource plans. Last year, NIPSCO, Northern Indiana Public Service Company, as a part of their integrated resource plan, they issued an RFP, an all-source RFP. And guess what that RFP resulted in? They saw that they could save their customers $4 billion for B with a billion with a B over 30 years by moving from their current 65% coal down to 15% coal in 2023, and eliminating, eliminating their coal-fired power plants by 2028. So to replace retiring coal, what was the low-cost option? They allowed the free marketplace to determine how to replace that energy. And you know what it was? Solar, wind, and storage. Now, if you think that's the only utility that's out doing that, and NIPSCO has issued one RFP, and they're in the process of bringing online, through power purchase agreements, three different wind projects, not here in Henry County, but elsewhere. They will be issuing another RFP before the end of the year. In April of this year, the Utility Regulatory Commission rejected Vectren's 850-megawatt natural gas plant, and as a result, Vectren has issued...
Thank you, Laura.
Has issued an RFP.
All right. Next up is Jared Noblet, and after him will be Shaw Beam.
My name is Jared Noblet. I'm a resident of Marion County, Indiana.[1158.25][1158.25](APPLAUSE). Proud Hoosier. I serve as Executive Director of the Indiana Conservative Alliance for Energy, a group of conservative Hoosiers in support of an "all-of-the-above" energy policy in Indiana, including wind energy. This evening, the Henry County Planning Commission will be considering whether or not they will allow wind energy development into the county. While this is a contentious issue, we are helping to articulate the facts, and we feel it's important to understand everything the county will be missing out on if it decides to refuse this development. Renewable energy brings millions of dollars in economic development to Hoosier counties. It lowers taxes by raising the property tax base. It helps to boost the county budgets in the form of additional funds for local schools, local school districts, and direct payments to the season-struggling farmers. Allowing citizens to place wind turbines on their private property provides them with the additional income to keep their family farms running. Additionally, Indiana's property tax caps make it very difficult for these rural counties to balance budgets. These renewable developments help by padding county budgets. A neighboring county has seen these benefits in action. They've been able to collect an additional $3 million for schools, $35 million for new roads, and $31 million in economic impact to the county from 2008 to the present. While many folks in Henry County seem fixated on the negatives of allowing wind turbines here, we are focused on the benefits. Henry County policymakers should carefully consider all of the potential benefits when making this decision. The Indiana Conservative Alliance for Energy stands in support of this project.
Next up is Shaw Beam, and then David Chambers.
Again, my name is Sean Beatty. I'm a resident of Henry County. I represent the Labor's International, I represent the Labor's International Union in North America. We have about 80 families here in Henry County. We have 1,000 families that are in the 13 surrounding counties. We were contacted by the contractor who's gonna build, we were contracted by the contractor who's gonna perform the work. They have assured us that these windmills will be built union, they'll be built with union help. That is why we are standing here today, and we came in support, only because at a year-and-a-half project, a year to a year and a half, our average salary would probably be between $60,000 and $80,000 per man. If that thing creates 200 jobs for the construction, those are the types of jobs that we do every day. So the reason that we're here is because we're trained, skilled, and qualified to build these things. We're not the decision-makers on whether they're coming or they're not, but if they do come, they will be built union, and they will be built local.
Excuse me. So the next speaker will be David Chambers. Also, I just want to remind everybody, please be respectful of the speakers. We want respect for all speakers, not just those that you agree with. And also, please don't direct questions to the speakers. If you have a question, and don't shout out questions from the audience. If you have an opportunity to come to the podium, you can ask a question at that time.
My name is David Chambers. I live in Henry County, Harrison Township, and I support Big Blue River Wind Farm. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before this commission. Looking at the economic of the wind farm, the wind farm will invest in the neighborhood of $135 million, resulting in significant tax revenue. The schools will benefit, providing even better education for our youth, and good schools attract more people. The taxes the Blue River, Big Blue River Wind Farm pays may even help reduce the taxes all residents pay. The income the landowners would receive from having wind turbines on their land will be reinvested and generate tax revenue from buildings built, machinery purchased, and the county income tax that will be paid off of that money. From an economic standpoint, it appears to be a win-win situation for the county and its residents. We can look at neighboring counties, at what they have done. Randolph County has 100 wind turbines and talking of putting up 75 more, plus solar energy. I think if we look at adjoining counties, Madison and Randolph Counties, we will see that it has no detrimental effect upon the counties to have these wind turbines and wind farms in their counties. Their income, their tax revenue has increased, and they have a surplus of money, not just a deficit at all times.
Next up is Bruce Bailey, and then after him is David Score. Bruce Bailey.
I'm a homeowner here in Newcastle. My brother and I also own a farm near Sulfur Springs. Climate change is real. Science is real. The world needs alternative renewable sources of energy to replace carbon-based fuels. Henry County needs to participate in this transfer to alternative sources of energy. I want to encourage investment in Henry County and in its children. How many other proposals are currently pending to invest more than $100 million in Henry County for capital improvements? How many other proposals are there? Do we want to attract new investment in Henry County? Do we want to attract and retain the young children in Henry County? If we obstruct a business investment like this, what message are we sending to other potential business investors? If we obstruct an investment like this, what message are we going to be sending to the young people of Henry County who might have a future here? This proposed capital investment increases the county's tax base. It employs a number of local people in the construction. It employs a number of non-local people in the construction who will spend their money in local shops. It creates a permanent employment for at least five people, and it provides additional income to landowners that will be spent in Henry County. Those were the prepared remarks I had, but I just wanted to add one thing. Mr. Gray, you said you spent three hours on the internet after you made the remarks. I spent two minutes. The Nina Pierpont study that you referenced was the coining of the term wind turbine syndrome. It has been debunked on the internet as junk science. She is married to a wind activist, anti-wind activist. Speaking of who is paying for this, I just think the devil could quote scripture to support his position. I support this project.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Next up is David Score, and after him, Dwayne Clark. David Score, then Dwayne Clark.
My name is Dave Score. I'm from Henry County. Now, addressing the health issues, I'm sure that there's, my agenda was to prove that farming was hazardous to your health. I'm sure I could find 100 studies that prove that farming is hazardous to your health. Raising cattle, raising hogs, and to some extent, that's true. In most occupations where something is actually accomplished, it can be hazardous to your health. Now, I'll get back to where I, my prepared speech. I could talk about farm expenses. They're continuing to climb. Repairs on due to tractors are up because they're loaded with electronics and EPA requirements. Electric bills are coming to climb. Real estate taxes are out of sight, but short-term, very few of you really care about that. Only say it's getting tougher and tougher to make ends meet in the farming world. So I want to go in a different direction. I just got back from vacation. I was at my hometown, a little town in North Dakota. I was at my hometown, a little town in North Dakota. That small town doesn't want change. When I was there in the '50s and '60s, they had two restaurants, a hardware store, catering service, grocery store, post office, hair salon, barber shop, grain elevator, church, and of course, a bar. The community also built a swimming pool. They had the opportunity to grow, but there was a group of people that didn't want to change. Decisions were made like, "Do you want to pave the streets?" And their answer was, "No." "Do you want to make any changes?" Their answers were, "No." Today, there's no restaurants, no catering service, no hair salon, no barber. They had no hardware store or grocery store. There's still a church, although it's pretty lowly attended, and of course, there's still a bar. So where do people go to eat? Where do they go for employment? They go to the neighboring towns. Let's vote for progress in Henry County. It's good for the community. Oh, but by the way, this small town did make national news, but it wasn't the right kind of news. There was sexual harassment, abuse going on in the high school. So if you don't go forward, I think it's a clear sign you're going to go sliding backwards. Let's vote for progress. Let's increase our tax base. Let's bring more employment to Henry County. I vote for progress, and I hope you do too. There's been a lot of studies going on. Now let's go forward. Thank you.
I know people want to show support for their speakers, but I just want to remind everyone that that eats into speakers' time. So please be respectful and don't clap. So Dwayne Clark is up, and then John Van after that.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Clark. I am a resident of Harrison Township of Henry County. I have been for 67 years, plus a few days. And my wife and I are in favor of wind energy. I also would respect that anybody who is visually or audio recording my image in words not to use them in public. Thank you. One of my remembrances from my mother and grandmother was, my mother was a teenager before they strung electric wire down her road so she could have a light and a refrigerator in their house. My uncle came home one evening before there was a refrigerator and found everyone deathly ill of food poisoning. I do not want to return to those days. And with all the scientific information that has been disseminated this evening, I wish to remind these people that there was a celebrated researcher from the Netherlands who wrote a paper that vaccinations caused ADD. It was debunked within six months. He was basically rode out of town on a rail. And what, 10, 15 years later, there are still people who believe that false paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next is John Van, and after him, Steve Meyer. John Van, then Steve Meyer.
I'm John Van. I've lived in Henry County for about 27 years now. Is this working okay? Can you hear?
A little louder, please.
You ought to get a look closer to it.
So I'm retired from Ball State. I have an undergraduate degree in physics, an MBA from Michigan State, and a PhD from University of Florida. At Ball State, I taught about energy and climate change and atmospheric effects. And the evidence is really clear that, for example, burning coal generates a lot of carbon dioxide emissions, and we're going to be moving away from coal for many reasons. You've probably heard where a lot of coal companies are going bankrupt. And right now, I don't know if you belong to Henry County RMC, but I do, and they're actually going to be buying electricity from a power purchase agreement for a solar farm being built in Randolph County. It's going to generate 200 megawatts of electricity. And just for comparison, the system at the airport, if you've seen that, that's 20 megawatts, so it's 10 times the size of the airport system. By the way, I'm also a former member of the Henry County Planning Commission. And it's interesting that back when I was a member, we voted to approve a MET tower, meteorological tower, to assess the effectiveness of wind energy just south of I-70. So it's interesting to see the progress that we've made. And I strongly support the Big Blue River Wind Farm. So there are many benefits. One of the things that hasn't been discussed is the health benefits of moving away from coal, which we're doing by moving toward wind and solar energy. When you burn coal, there are several things that happen. In addition to the climate effects of carbon dioxide emissions, you also get soot, which contributes to asthma. You also get mercury emissions, and those go into the atmosphere and fall into the waters and the land and contaminate the fish in Indiana. So really, if a woman in Indiana is pregnant or plans to get pregnant in the near future or if they have children, they shouldn't eat many of the fish caught in Indiana because of the mercury contamination. So moving to renewables gets rid of that effect. Coal's going away anyway. There are also the financial benefits that have been mentioned already of moving to having wind power in Henry County. Also, lower prices. Renewables are now beating coal in terms of lower prices. And we can be good neighbors to those who live near coal-fired power plants by moving to renewable energy. So as I mentioned, I strongly support the wind farm, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Next is Steve Meyer, and after him, Carolyn Van.
There's an S on the end there. Thank you very much.
Please, please. Please address the planning commission, not the audience.
I'm 66 years old. I've lived in Middletown my entire life. I'm a Shenandoah graduate. My wife's a Shenandoah graduate. Both of my daughters graduated from Shenandoah, and I now have three grandchildren in Shenandoah High School. I'm a Raider. We have a wind turbine right outside of our football stadium. When they erected that wind turbine, it was just -- when they finished it, it was during a football game. And when they lowered the tower that they'd used, everybody in the entire stadium --
Sir, please address the commission.
Everybody in the entire stadium watched them. The game was -- it was a blowout. Shenandoah was blowing them out. Everybody was watching these people take this huge tower down. When they left the stadium, they had their lights on, and everybody gave them a standing ovation. Everybody in the stadium gave them a standing ovation. That wind turbine was on WTHR, Operation Football. I don't remember the guy's name, but when they came to Shenandoah to do a football game, the first thing he did was photograph that wind turbine, okay? My second point is, I'm 66 years old and I'm retired. I ride my bicycle nine miles around the Shenandoah area every day. The first thing I do when I get up out of my -- off my property is I look over at Shenandoah and see which way the wind's blowing, because that affects my ride. It's always blowing at Shenandoah. No matter what, it always blows there, always. And as I ride my bicycle, I'm thinking, what a waste of money this is that we're not harnessing this. Third thing, I go to the football game in Winchester, two times. I've asked the people who are selling the tickets, "Do these turbines bother you?" "No, I don't even notice them." I went to Union, a basketball game. I asked the people taking the tickets. I said, "Do these turbines -- they're all around. I mean, they're everywhere in Randolph County. Do these bother you?" "No, bother me." Last winter, I went to a basketball game at Randolph Southern, and I asked the girl taking the tickets, I said, "You know, you've got wind turbines everywhere here. Do these bother you?" "No." "Do you hear them?" "No." She goes, "I've got one right outside my back door. My husband and I sit out in our backyard in the evenings, and we love to watch them because all of the lights flicker at the same time." She goes, "It's right there. Doesn't bother us at all." And it's just making money for these people, okay? I've heard that wind turbine at Shenandoah twice. One time at a football game, and I go to every football game, every baseball game, I go to the track meets. I've heard it one time when the wind was coming out of the northeast, and I heard it the other day when I was riding my bicycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next is Carolyn Van.
I'm Carolyn Van. I live in Springport, and I've been almost 30 years in Henry County. I am a retired professor from Ball State. Taught biology, most recently, solid molecular biology and biotechnology. But my doctorate's in ecology, and I know science, and I know climate change is real. I can see it all around us already, and I'm very concerned about what this means for my children and my grandchildren, and for us also in the next few years. I do believe in climate change so much that my husband and I work to bring solar to east central Indiana. We volunteer and have gotten numerous homes in the area, over 40, I think, in the last year and a half, to get solar installations. And I know that wind and solar are the answer. We have to get off of coal, and I think this is the direction we have to go. In addition, you've heard many other benefits, the economic benefits. I think it makes Henry County look more progressive, and I think that's important. We need to attract new businesses. We need to keep our young people here, and for many, many reasons, health reasons and other things that were mentioned, I think we have to really go with renewable energy, and this is an opportunity for Henry County to make a -- to benefit from it financially and in many other ways. Thank you.
Mr. President, that is all that has signed up to speak in support. I don't know if you want to move on. Are you prepared to move on to those which wish to speak in opposition or have questions?
It is 7:17. I think we will move on to those who wish to speak in opposition, but we probably -- what do you think, Darren? About in a half hour, we'll offer another break to those here, or what do you think?
That's entirely up to you.
We're going to move on, but I'm going to gauge the reactions of my fellow planning commission members, whether they're getting uncomfortable or not in about a half hour. You have the sheets ready to go there for the --
All right. Again, I want to go over this quickly and -- those which wish to speak in opposition or have questions, one hour in total will be allotted to hear from the members of the public who wish to speak in opposition or have questions about the proposed project. Speakers will be called to the microphone off the sign-up sheet in order in which they signed up. All speakers must clearly state their name and county of residence prior to speaking. Individuals will be given a maximum of three minutes each to speak. Attorneys representing multiple individuals will be given the maximum of nine minutes to speak, provided that they state their representation as such prior to speaking. Public testimony from individuals who are in opposition or have questions will be taken for one hour in total or until there are no other speakers in opposition, whichever comes first. All speakers will have only one opportunity to provide testimony. Speakers may not ask to return to the podium to make additional remarks or ask questions. Speakers cannot yield time to another speaker. Testimony must be relevant to the matter being considered by the commission. Speakers who are not providing relevant or respectful testimony will forfeit their time. If a speaker has a question for the applicant, that question must be addressed to the commission and not the applicant. The commission will ask the applicant and/or their representative to answer relevant audience questions after hearing from all speakers. Again, I would remind everyone that clapping or disrupting the meeting takes away from the opportunity for speakers to speak. It's 7:19 right now, and the first person who signed up to speak is Steve Snyder, and following him is Rosie Ritchie. Steve Snyder, then Rosie Ritchie.
Thank you. I'm Steve Snyder. I'm an attorney from Syracuse, Indiana. I am here representing numerous individuals. Those persons' names are Tanya Hinkle, Joyce Hansen, Stacy Hansen, Bob and Judy Walker, Robert and Carla Sanders, Mark and Mary Pierce, Bob and Jamma Tennant, Cheryl and Stoller, Nathan and Amy Cash, Tom and Debbie Cash, Larry and Linda Holcomb, Mark and Deb Walker, John and Christie Walker, Susan Stutes, and Gary and Terry Roberts. I'm also here representing five towns, the towns of Catice, Greensboro, Canard, Mount Summit, and Sulphur Springs, but I will save those comments for the appropriate section of the proceedings. One of the things that I have been impressed with with tonight's hearing, and I've been through several of these wind farm hearings, as they're called, was the information that came out in the question session. Very seldom have I seen a plan commission, whether the director or a member, question the petitioner the way the petitioner was questioned tonight. One of the handouts I gave to you was a compilation of four different things that should be addressed in regard to individual concerns. The first one is the concern regarding infrasound. I've been involved in opposing wind farms for about 10 years now, and the first time I heard about infrasound was when I was preparing for the first hearing in Marshall County. What is infrasound? You can't hear it, but your brain senses it, and as a result, all night long, when that turbine within two or three miles is spinning, it's generating low-frequency sounds that your brain is trying to shut out, when it would normally just be sleeping. That's one thing, and it has been now. Peer-reviewed, those studies numerous times in the last few years, because all of the studies presented by the power companies will say that doesn't exist, when in fact, it's now been proven to exist physiologically with the effect that 25% of the people within two miles of a wind turbine will be affected by infrasound. And that's a significant population effect for one turbine. But setback standards, your setbacks contained in your WEX ordinance are minimums. The courts have recently said that minimums are just those minimums. If you want to impose something larger than a 1.1-time setback or a 1,500-foot setback, your setbacks are minimums. If you think the protection of your citizens is significant, you can just say, "Okay, we can approve this project, but only on the condition that those setbacks be significantly increased to what has occurred in other counties around the state, whether that's 2,500 feet, 3,000 feet, 3,500 feet from a residence." That's an option you have available. The World Health Organization, in October of 2018, listed as one of the significant sources of noise in the world that should be considered as wind turbine noise. sources of noise in the world that should be considered as wind turbine noise. They have always maintained that a three-mile setback would be appropriate for many residents. If you review the information I provided on setbacks, you will see that a 1,500-foot setback from a residence is woefully inadequate. Values of property. One thing that you should understand about appraisers is it's not an exact science. It's an opinion. And the opinion is, "Oh gee, there won't be any effect whatsoever." When the next guy who did a study in 2011, Martin Heintleman, found that there was a significant effect. Mike McCann in Chicago studied Wisconsin after the turbines were up, found a 22% to 45% decrease in property values directly related to the turbines. Birds, bats, and their habitats, it's in here too. Wind turbines kill them, period. That's the way to look at it. But there are a couple other issues from an individual standpoint that I want to address in your ordinance. And I've handed out something that you can see so you know that I'm not just blowing smoke. The five towns I mentioned have filed suit against Big Blue. And they filed suit to enforce health and safety ordinances that were adopted by the towns under legislation created by the state legislature that gave those towns the ability to protect their citizens from threats to health and safety within four miles. We're asking the courts to enjoin the construction of this particular wind farm because it violates those ordinances. But what's a little more interesting yet is the interplay that has with your ordinance. You've been told earlier tonight that you have jurisdiction and you can do it all and it doesn't make any difference what the towns are saying. But that contradicts your ordinance directly. Your ordinance says that it does not... it's not intended to abrogate, annul, or void any other ordinance. And if there is a conflicting ordinance, that conflicting ordinance, if it is stricter than yours, is the one that controls. That's right out of your zoning ordinance. I'm not asking you to create anything. I'm just saying if you read your ordinance, that's exactly what it says. And how can you read that and then say, "Okay, at least for the turbines located within five miles of those towns, we can't approve it because our ordinance prohibits us from approving it." We've been the battle of whether or not commission-approved uses are in fact something that a plan commission can do. They're not authorized by state statute. That litigation's still pending in front of Judge Wolf in the Delaware Circuit Court and won't come to a hearing even until August 28th of this year. But in an attempt to resolve that issue, there was an amendment made to your ordinance that says a commission-approved use is the same thing as a special use or an exception use or those other things that are actually permitted in the state-enabling statute. But what wasn't recognized was the plan commission still doesn't have any jurisdiction to do any of that. So you were made the hearing officer for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I have to assume you've seen that ordinance amendment, Exhibit B to the WEX ordinance. That means that any decision you make tonight or whenever you make your final decision is as a hearing officer for the Board of Zoning Appeals and not as a plan commission. If in fact you can even be appointed as a hearing officer, and there's question in the statute there because it talks about the appointment of one person, your decision will be appealable directly to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who can modify it, reverse it, approve it. And that decision then would subsequently be appealable to Circuit Court. But you're not acting as a plan commission tonight. You're acting as a Board of Zoning Appeals, which actually gives you more discretion than a plan commission has. So you need to make sure you understand what your two hats are and which one you have on tonight. There are a couple other interesting points in your ordinance. But the most significant is the elements that are... Was that nine?
That was nine minutes, Mr. Snyder.
Okay.
Next up is Rosie Ritchie. And I apologize on this next name. I want to say it looks like Mike Hegerman or Millie Hegerman?
Mike. I'm Rosalind Ritchie, Harrison Township, Henry County. There are violations to the WEX ordinance of the Big Blue River Wind Project application. Not following instructions and/or missing information are grounds for rejection on many applications, and that should be the case here. The ordinance requires a site plan on a maximum sheet of 36 by 24 inches. Calpine's layout sheet consists of three overlapping sheets of that size well over the required maximum. An additional sheet showing setbacks also exceeds the maximum size. The entire map format makes it nearly impossible to interpret. By definition, a WEX includes required facilities, hence the lay-down yard is part of a WEX. The ordinance setback is 750 feet from a dedicated roadway or overhead transmission lines. The application maps indicate that the lay-down yard is right next to State Road 38, not 750 feet away. Missing from the site plan are many property lines and adjacent property lines with the proper identification. Missing is a sheet showing the location of all existing and proposed underground utility lines. There is no indication that there was a certified sound engineer performing the sound study as required. It also requests the study from 8 Hz to 8,000 Hz. Their study gives results beginning at 31.5 Hz, which represents only audible sounds. There are no results from the lower frequencies, which are low-frequency sound or infrasound. The proposed batch plant is a concrete mixing facility. It will be heavy industrial, requiring a separate permit or variance. This WEX plan goes from the Hancock-Henry County line to State Road 3. It runs south of US 36 to State Road 234. There are about 35 miles of collection cables, mostly underground, crossing drainage, phone, electric, and gas lines. This plan puts the health and safety and general welfare of potentially thousands of people at risk. This application violates our WEX ordinance by the size of the site plan sheet, poor setback diagrams on an oversized sheet, missing property lines on the site plan, missing location of underground utility lines, no certified sound engineer, omission of low property, low-frequency infrasound, and the lay-down yard doesn't meet standards.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ritchie.
Yeah!
Up next is Mike Hegerman, and then Susan Stoots after Mr. Hegerman.
How's that? Is that okay, Larry? Can you hear me? It sounds weird to me.
Get right up into the microphone.
Okay, is that better?
That's better.
Okay. I'm Mike Hegerman. My wife Irene and I are farmers. We live on our farm in northern Harrison Township. We also own property in two other townships in Henry County. Here we are again, another opportunity for this planning commission to protect Henry County and Henry County citizens. I've been very blessed to be a farmer. I wasn't raised on a farm. I guess I got the bug when I was pretty young. And through junior high and high school and college, I worked on neighboring farms. And when I graduated from Purdue in 1974, I got home and sought out an opportunity and found one that worked for me. And it was good. And then three years later, I married a northern Indiana farm girl and it got better. One thing about being a farmer, I think for myself, is you realize what an important asset that our earth is. The soil we grow crops in, raise livestock. And that's one thing that really distresses me when I think about these wind turbines, is the earthworks required to build one. I'm sure you've seen pictures, I hope you've seen pictures, of these things. Maybe 100 feet wide, 50 foot deep, tons and tons of concrete and rebar. My question would be, how does this affect our drainage? Well, we don't know for sure. How does this affect our groundwater? Well, we really don't know. In the past month, there's been a couple opportunities for studies to be done that might have given us some answers. Those requests for study were ignored. I do know this, I feel sure about this. All that tons and tons of concrete and rebar will be here long after the last turbine propeller stops turning. It'll be here long after the last turbine's decommission, if they are. And I pretty much feel like that concrete rebar will be in the ground. It may be covered up four foot, but it'll be in the ground long after mankind's gone from this earth. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk. I hope you will... Sorry. Hope you will vote to deny these CAU applications. Do what's best for Henry County and Henry County citizens. Thank you.
Next up is Susan Stoots, and then Bob Hobbs.
Can you hear me? Okay. Since everybody likes to state their degrees, which I wasn't going to, but I have a bachelor's degree in medical technology. I'm Susan Stoots, Henry County, Greensboro Township. I have a signed petition with names of my neighbors, some with Newcastle addresses between Greensboro and Kennard Road, who want you to vote no on the permit allowing wind farms to build turbines in Henry County. There are 35 signatures from basically three miles of road. Pardon me. And they wanted to sign. They really did. And only three neighbors out of 38 neighbors didn't sign, but took the printed information to read. And some of the neighbors didn't even know they could be this close to a turbine. To this day, I can't believe that. They had no idea. It cannot be clear that the turbines are not wanted. There's very little benefit to the county, but there will be people moving from the county, physical and mental problems, lower property value, which has been stated many times, and distorted landscape. Their information, the wind companies have been presenting, have been selective, whitewashed, and exaggerated. The county, Henry County, spoke when they overwhelmingly voted for four anti-wind officials in the last election. And they will be doing so in the next election. Because of the overwhelming negative information, if you allow this permit, it will be obvious that there is a personal motivation for you to do so, period. It certainly won't be for the county's benefit. Mr. Anos should be recused because he has spoken openly many times in other counties promoting the wind industry. Obviously, he won't recuse himself. Mr. Anos campaigning for the wind industry and being on two commissions, that vote is a travesty. Mr. Curley is from Hagerstown. Why is he voting on a Henry County project? Commissioners have asked people in other counties how they feel about the turbines. "No problem," they say. The land lease owner, and you should know this, signer by contract, is not allowed to say anything negative. And there's a...
Thank you, Mrs. Stoots. Thank you. Next is Bob Hobbs, and then Tom Saunders after him.
My name's Robert Hobbs. I'm a resident of Henry County. At this time, the plan calls for three wind turbines to be immediately west of my house. A few weeks ago, the Courier-Times Thumbs Up/Thumbs Down editorial gave a thumbs down to Calpine for continuing with their wind turbine initiative and spotted the lack of public support. I applaud the newspaper's stand, but the recipient of this approval should have been the county commissioners, who were voted to represent the people. The sound defeat of county officials not vocally opposed to wind turbines in the last election clearly showed the lack of community support to move forward. This gives you, the planning commission, an opportunity to become the voice of the people. Heard several comments tonight about the environmental issues related to the windmills. We don't even have a recycling program in Henry County. So maybe if we're going to start saving the world, we ought to start in Henry County with something like a recycling program. I would encourage you to do your homework. When Rush County commissioners began looking and talking with the manufacturers of wind turbines, they learned that there's a sticker affixed to the motor housing indicating that the unit should not be placed within 2,500 feet of inhabitants. This was something that was not shared with them otherwise. So please, do your homework. There was mention of penalties for excessive noise and the flickering. What are those penalties? Who enforces them? Are they significant enough to make a difference? Where does the electricity go? The Benton County project, the electricity there is channeled to New York through Canada. So there's very little thing to be gained by the locals there. Has the county considered what it's going to cost them in legal expenses when new commissioners are elected and they begin to repeal, replace, or change some of the questionable wind turbine guidelines? So how much will that eventually cost taxpayers? Has anybody even considered that? So with that, again, as has been voiced, please do your due diligence. Look at the angles and make a decision based on what the people of the county are asking you to do. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Tom Saunders, and then Betsy Mills. And again, I'd remind everybody, please hold your applause. It just takes away time from the speakers.
Do they charge extra for air conditioning for this building? I don't know if I'm on the right list. When I called to be asked to put on the agenda, I was told I could go on the public list and then speak when the public speaks. So that's the list I put my name on. I didn't realize there would be a government officials list or government list. I'm here basically to answer some questions. In the last legislative session, we had a bill, Senate House Bill 535, and Title 36 was under consideration. They wanted to rescind the ability of locals to enact the four-mile buffer. One of the reasons Senator Boots said he wanted to pass that legislation was because you had unelected people making decisions for the county. No offense to you guys up there, but I only see two elected officials on the board. So I don't know why that was a problem with Senator Boots. But we fought long and hard. We had people from all over the state who wanted to grandfather in those ordinances that had been adopted. Of the 13 ordinances adopted in Henry County, 12 of them were grandfathered in. Those ordinances were adopted legally and lawfully. Those ordinances were adopted legally and lawfully, and they stand that way today. I took a visit to the courthouse, looked at the map, I think, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, of the 38 turbines, 36 are within the buffer zone. There's a question on the other two, depending on where they put them on the partial. You know, we don't do referendums here, but I think, I do think that the voters spoke in the last election. I heard from thousands of people at the General Assembly when we were debating 535, and I probably only heard from a handful of people who supported the turbines in Henry County. So I think it is our duty to represent the people who sent us here and who elect us and depend on us to look out for their well-being. Also, I heard a rumor that the legislation and grandfathering wasn't worth the paper it was printed on. I have a copy of a Supreme Court ruling where Title 36 was challenged in court, and the Supreme Court upheld those communities who adopted those ordinances. So you might want to take that into consideration when you're spending money. Thank you.
Next up is Betsy Mills, Betsy Mills, and then Jim McShurley to follow.
My name is Betsy Mills. I live in rural Middletown. I apologize for my sunglasses, not a fashion statement, I got a concussion this weekend in a boating accident, and the lights in here are rather oppressive. I am Henry County born and raised, Chinnandoa graduate. I left to get my education and find a great job. I came home because I love it here, and because I want to see us do better. A year ago, in early August, 44 of this county's citizens came before the planning commission begging you not to pass the updated WEX ordinance, which doesn't go nearly far enough to protect our citizens and their property from the encroachment and impact of industrialized wind. Forty-four people. Not a single pro-wind voice spoke that evening, and the planning commission voted to accept this document anyway. We've been through a year of battles since then. Many of us have spent the better part of five months lobbying and testifying at the State House on SB 535 this spring, which impacted the rights of 12 of our towns to protect their ability to grow and thrive. To the dismay of Calpine, our citizens lobbied well enough to see the towns' protections kept in the final version of SB 535, but were also subject to legal challenge. Big picture, we see Indianapolis growing our way along the I-69, I-70 corridors. Henry County stands to benefit greatly from the growth of the Indy Metro area and the economic development it brings. If only we can get out of our own way. Allowing Calpine to come in and build these enormous structures is going to drastically impact our economic development. Study after study supports that claim, though obviously the other side is arguing very differently. So how many more battles do we actually have to fight? If you grant Calpine the CAU, you set up a painful and expensive legal challenge between this massive multinational corporation, whose only interest is profit for themselves and their shareholders, versus the good citizens of our county, who are voting in record numbers as of last year's primary and general election. Your citizens are begging you to protect them yet again. Friends on the planning commission, you obviously hold great power in your hands this evening. You can save our towns from having to suffer through litigation from this enormous corporation that doesn't give a rip about any of us. Their goal is personal gain and profit. You had the chance to be heroes tonight. You can quiet this painful storm that has engulfed this county and its good people for far too long. You hold all of the power and all of the cards. All you have to do is vote no on Calpine's CAU permit. Restore us to regular order so that we can recover and build for our future. Thank you.
Next up is Jim McShurley, Jim McShurley, followed by Gary Rogers.
After those two, it's been requested we have a break.
Hi there, Jim McShurley, lifelong resident, Henry County, Jefferson-Faul Creek Township. I'm speaking on three reasons to deny CAU based on question number three. First one is Calpine is not a suitable business partner. You don't need to take my word for it, all you have to do is just Google the word "Calpine". What's going to come up is a troubled past and a lot of misery and headache. There's bankruptcy, massive debt, derivative losses, and lawsuits, and it goes on and on. There's pages and pages of Google search for this company. In 2016, with massive debt, $12 billion it was described, losing money, they were sold on the cheap Energy Capital Partners LLC, a Canadian private equity firm. I don't know if you guys know this, but it's public. Moody's credit rating agency said, quote, "They are more risky now," and they put them on negative credit watch. And they also cited their exposure to Pacific Gas and Electric, a California utility. Pacific Gas and Electric recently filed bankruptcy. They have possibly $30 billion of exposure, of which Calpine has significant exposure to Pacific Gas. Calpine is a troubled past, they're now fronting a Delaware LLC, controlled by a Canadian LLC, with little experience in the wind energy business. And lastly, they don't have this power sold. At least, I can find no record or evidence of this power even being sold. So, we had Tim Durham to lead us the way, that we should be learning, that we should be more wary of who we are rolling a red carpet out for. Even a good plan, this is the wrong partner. The second reason is industrial turbines are a terrible business idea. I'll let others speak to the specifics, but the walling off. We will be walled off, entombed, encapsulated, and forever walled off from further economic development, and others will speak more. The third reason, and I think this is important, is Henry County paid $100,000 a structure point for this professional opinion, and I quote, "Commercial wind projects are not a suitable use for land in Henry County." That language was changed to "pro-wind" by local officials who will never step forward, who were probably conflicted. The professional opinion was subverted. I confirmed this with structure point, they said, quote, "They were ordered to change that paragraph to 'pro-wind' by your officials." The correct comprehensive plan is the one we should be using, and not the fake one that was altered by selfish interests. To conclude, this is the wrong business partner, this is a terrible business plan, it's the exact wrong location, even if it was a plan, and Henry County paid for a professional opinion, structure point, which corroborates everything I'm saying right now. Thank you.
All right, last speaker before we take a break, last speaker, Gary Rogers.
My name is Gary Rogers, I am a local business owner, I am a local property owner. However, because of an impending wind turbine installation in Henry County, I sold my property, our dream home, and moved next door to Hancock County. Here in a little bit, you're going to be asked to answer three questions. When you get to those three questions, remember this, I've given you page 23 of the ordinance, I call your attention to Section 9.5, Conflict with Other Regulations. Nothing in this ordinance is intended to preempt other applicable state and federal laws or regulations, including compliance with all Federal Aviation Administration rules and regulations, and shall comply with the notification requirements of the FAA. Nor are they intended to interfere with, abrogate, or annul any other ordinance, any other ordinance, rule, regulation, statute, or provision of law. The provision that is more restrictive or that imposes higher standards shall govern. When you're asked those three questions, if you keep that in mind, although your attorneys have told you that there is no conflict, there is a conflict. State law gave the citizens of Henry County the right, through their communities, to enact ordinances to protect themselves. They have done so in overwhelming numbers. When you get those three questions, remember this, and you must say no. I'm not an attorney, I'm an accountant, I can help you with your taxes. But I do read English, and have done so for some 61 years. I can read this, I've read it to you, there is no excuse, you have it in front of you. When they ask the three questions, the answers are all no.
With that, let the lines for the restrooms form up.